All right, we are going to call the EWEB board meeting to order. This is a work session. Five thirty on April eighteenth. And we are going to be talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion. And happy lineman appreciation day.
Yes, yes, I was gonna say that.
There's any cake left over?
There was cake, yes. I don't know if there's any left over. It's doubtful.
I would.
I hope they ate it all.
While we're saying thanks, I'd just like to appreciate Kelly. She's put a lot of her own time into this format and presentation and this concept that we're going to go through here. A lot of our own time with some of this work behind the scenes, so I really want to appreciate her real quick. We're here to talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion in the course and the policy and. I want to start with the purpose a little bit. The really, the main purpose, at least for Kelly and I tonight, is to gather information. So we did the interviews with all of you and came back with a lot of take. One of the takeaways was the interest in board for staff to go ahead and drive the thing. Then come back and talk about policy language. So to do that, though, we're trying to bring everybody to a shared understanding of what goes into a policy and specifically DEI policy. Also going to lay out an option for a roadmap to see if that suits people for timely efforts that they want to put into it. Tonight, we're going to do a somewhat facilitated, semi-hybrid presentation format against the fact that one once was. Fair to have a little bit more dialogue back and forth. Rules kind of thing, so. When you see a pause button up there, then the pause will stop and ask a question. Gilbert Carleton will kind of do this thing. Graham Robin, I guess, I don't know what you call it. Just a quick agenda check. Since part of the purpose tonight is to solicit information. I just thought I'd throw out an open question. A lot of times I do like diversity, you know, I can throw out a diversity question. What's your favorite ice cream? That one seems a little simple, so try to stretch your mind a little bit here. Just gonna throw it out. What do you hope to see for EWEB in ten years? Just to exercise your poker mics and your brains to start clicking.
You want to cue here or what?
You can sing out, I won't ask.
I've never been shy. Relative to what? To DEI? Or EWEB? What do I hope for EWEB in ten years? That we continue to be reliable and informed. Continue to be as we are today. I think it's an excellent place to work. I think it's an excellent organization. And I think we'll see it go backwards for any list of reasons.
I think that EWEB often. We give a lot of really innovative. And I hope that in 2033, we continue on that trajectory. Being a leader when we're really just a midsize.
I'll kind of tag team on that. I would just say. Being a leader in the community. In all different aspects. You got a good leader in our, as a community part.
I guess I'll say I, we're continuing to meet our community's needs as those needs change.
I'll jump in and say that I also hope that we are. Reliable and. Continuing to get more resilient as. Times change and we are dealing more with climate change and I hope that we have. A strong trajectory in our, where we're at with our energy by that time. I mean, this is after the BPA contract, so. People have a really solid understanding of, and other new contracts that have been set up by then. I also hope that we're reliable.
Frank, you'll be retired. What do you think?
I hope the organization is in a position where it can be really intentional with the outcomes it wants to achieve. Sort of in the moment and positioning itself going forward. And I hope we're the kind of organization that, that it's not only about what we're doing, but how we're doing it that matters. An organization that's living up to its values in the pursuit of its mission, which is going to change with the community and other things. But I'm hoping that we continue to perform and we do that in a way that we're proud of.
Thank you. I think. These are all really good comments. I think you'll see actually some of those things come back. This conversation, so, so a lot of the things you mentioned are. Think you'll see some of those come back in some of these conversations here.
I hope Lieber decommissioning has started.
Okay, I'm gonna write that one. No, that is. Just real quick, I thought I would give you a look back. So my perspective, I've been here twenty-ish years, something like that, twenty-plus years. One of the things we talk about with diversity, equity, and inclusion. In this policy, it's almost like, hey, we're doing something new and different here. I just wanted to do a check in and say, you know, there's things that we do as a company all along that vary in principle. Diversity, equity, inclusion. For the last twenty years or so, we've been part of the ECC workings, diversity team. I was. Back in two thousand something three. You know, we've been funding limited income programs, holidays, celebrating backgrounds, Juneteenth, Veterans Day. Training, just recently, we did. People and tribal nations upriver and. Fire restoration work, for instance. The thing is, we have a continuous improvement culture, which may not sound so DEI, but. There's a lot of components that as you break down. Methodologies that. There are just a few things. I did want to highlight too, and this was in the background to some extent, but. This board here has even been involved with, with a number of DEI things and even going back to starting the strategic plan. Frank talked about the values. Values that have you noticed. You think about the people-centric values. Safety and the community. Both of those have been. To use a word we've struggled with at times to interpret what those values mean. Safety, for instance, has gone from physical safety to psychological and being community has gone from community. General to community and culture. And this board's been a big part of that.
Right, well, so that was the first part of tonight's presentation. So if you thought back to our agenda, there were four components. The first was to kind of celebrate some of the work that has brought us here. It's planted some seeds that we're hoping set the foundation. For where we want to go next. And I'd like to move into the second part of tonight's agenda, which is. Talking about a draft roadmap for where do we go next? And in the, you know, I love the movie Alice in Wonderland, the Cheshire Cat. It's one of my favorite characters. He says, if you don't know where you're going. Any road will take you there, right? So we have to have an intended purpose of where we're headed. And so if we, you know, starting back last year in February of 2022, we kind of laid out this idea of this framework. This, the components that will go into a policy. And the first part of the roadmap that we'll get to here in a moment is that we want to get to. A policy developed by the end of 2023, by December. That's our goal. Part of the organizational goals that you all passed at the beginning of the year. And this is the, the framework that we have laid out in the packet. It talks about what kind of goes into each of these components. The rationale and vision, why is it important for EWEB to have a DEI policy? What's our aspiration or a big commitment? The purpose, what's the objective, frame, and use of the policy? We have to understand what words we're using and what they mean so that we're all on the same page and we can have some shared language to understand what we're talking about. And then we have to understand what the scope is, where are the areas of focus? And what are the roles of everybody in their own swim lanes, right? How do we understand who does what? And then how do we make sure, and this was a theme that came through loud and clear in the one-on-one interviews we had with each one of you. This is not a one and done, right? We're not here to create a policy that's going to sit on the shelf. We want this to be a living document. We want this to be continuous in its improvement and evolution and evolvement. And so how do we build the systems to create that transparency and reporting? So that was what we laid out a year ago. These are the components. We are building the work plan around the roadmap. To figure out how we can get to content in each of these areas. And so tonight's purpose is to start with how we're going to get to content in A, B, and C. And then we'll go into the other components on how we're going to get to the rest of the policy and then beyond, how do we implement the policy? But our first question for discussion is up here and you'll notice we've got a pause button on the screen. So the discussion question for you all the way in on at this moment is. Is this the right general policy framework? Are these the right categories? Is this what we should be working towards by the end of the year? Hey, John.
I hate to be David Kelly, but anyhow, that's a long story. I'm going to struggle with this and it's not because I don't believe in it. It's because I don't know my qualifications to participate in it. You know, I'm who I am and I'm not going to apologize for being a white male and living in this town for seventy-some odd years. So I don't know where we're going with it. I don't even know why we're doing it. Other than everybody else is doing it, so we're going to do it because I want to know what we should be doing that we're not doing and why aren't we doing that? If it hasn't, if it's been identified that we should be doing something different in these categories, why aren't we doing it? Why are we waiting for a year to adopt a policy? You know, the old saying, just do it. So I'm going to have to be led rather than be a leader because. I am who I am and, you know, I've lived here in this little cocoon my entire life, so I haven't been exposed to a lot of that. I have a lot of family members that are of different diverse groups. But so this is going to be a learning process for me and drag me along. If you perceive that I'm not trying to be cooperative, that's not the reality. I am. I don't have to attend these meetings, but I want to attend it. I want to learn. So you're going to have to take me to where we're going because I'm not, you know, I've signed up for utility work about human resources. And so go for it and educate.
I appreciate you saying that. I think that this work is, I'll say for myself, is really hard also because I'm a white person and. I don't want to offend anybody. I want to make sure that policies that we are adopting and adapting are inclusive. But I don't always know what that means since that's not my background. So I'm really grateful that we're going through this. That's and I trust that. Process will help us see what it is that we need. And also, I just want to acknowledge that we might make some mistakes along the way. Like, it's pretty hard to be like open and conversant. Especially because this is a public forum and we don't want to offend anybody and there's just a lot of learning that has to happen. So I know the question about the proposed elements of policy. But I guess I just want to acknowledge that it's a difficult process. And this looks fine to me.
I guess I would say. The general policy framework I feel comfortable with as far as the mechanics of how we get there. For me, it's like a lot of things that, that I do on this board. I'm not a power trader. I'm not a, you know, water analyst technician. And so I have to learn as I go along the way and try to guide as best I can. And so that's, that's the lens that I'm going through it in. I don't feel that I, by any means, am in a position to write a policy. I think I can give input on what I am exposed to as far as, as far as developing a policy. But that's about as far as I go. I think that, that, you know, we've got some, we've got some consultants and experts that are coming in to help guide us through this. And so that's where I see my role as. And so I think that that will fit into these five different categories. And to the best I can, I'll give guidance, but I have no means in my fully qualified written policy.
Boy, a bunch of thoughts. One, I'll advocate for. Opportunities to have some of these conversations in closed meetings. I think it's hard, going to be hard for us to get to the. Some of this in meetings just because we're conscious of what we're saying, speaking for myself, I'll be what I'm saying, trying not to step in it. And so, you know, I would say if there's a way for us to do that. I agree with you that I think it's hard. To know what we're not doing. And I guess I go, I go on the assumption that we, we are doing everything within our power to the best of our ability to. Be cognizant of the differential services that we provide to different people and the way we treat people internally. I don't think anybody's intentionally trying to. Leave people out or. Look differently, but. I think that happens anyway. And so from my perspective, one of the things that I feel like we need is a, you know, is a third party to help us with this, not because we're not good at it, but because. Just like writing an essay, I might be a good writer, but I suck at editing my own work, right? It's the same kind of thing, like you have to have somebody who's not you. Giving you a different view of your own stuff, so. I'll continue to advocate for that in terms of the elements in policy. Maybe in here somewhere, it does feel like some kind of clear goals. Or objectives. Maybe that's too granular for what we're shooting with. Policy, but maybe that just falls under the directives or the purpose, but. You know, to the extent that we can make it tangible and understandable, so we can all agree about what that destination that Kelly just described is. I think that would be useful for all of us to be able to tell if we're getting there.
In terms of the proposed elements that are outlined, the theory, the. I mean, I think you've boiled down the basics of what we need to cover and yeah, we're going to all go through a journey to get there. And what that journey looks like and what path we take. We will develop together. So along your lines of, we don't know which road yet, but. I do think that this is a good goal, that it puts these points along the way. And we may change our path and minds as we go, as we all learn. That's what we're all here to do and we all bring a different perspective and that's all valuable and, you know, I want to respect that too. I mean, your viewpoint, your viewpoint, your viewpoint, they're all very different than mine. And we're going to bring certain pieces, but I recognize too that there are gaps there. And to the extent that this process helps us. ourselves choose or understands others better so that when we're developing policy, that what comes out of this is. That aspect of continuous improvement that we talk about. And I think this, you know, we're thinking about ten years from now. We have done a lot of great work at EWEB. We're a wonderful organization and the. I think a lot of the low-hanging fruit of the things that we've done have been picked. And so this is the next phase of that continuous improvement of, we're going to have to dig down and find more of that, you know, the work that we need to do to get better. So I appreciate that we're going through this and I think these are the right elements. Thank you for digging in and boiling it down to these more simple points that are digestible.
Yeah, thanks. The framework is very consistent with other board policies that this board has worked on recently. If you look back at some of the previous policies, they had slightly different structures. But if you take the last one that the board worked on, for example, which was the climate change policy. A lot of the policy at the beginning was why we're doing it. It then had certain directives. Directing the organization to, to do these certain things and be accountable in these ways. And then, you know, how is that implemented through the decision process? And, and I see this similarly. I, I, so I, the, the structure is, is consistent. I think it's, includes the elements that we want to have in board policy. And I'll say really part of the board's role is to provide oversight and direction as to how the utility needs to operate. And so this is an opportunity to do that relative to how DEI is incorporated into the work that we do. Similarly to something like a triple bottom line, what you're saying is that in that case, when you make major decisions, we want you to take this approach. Or use these guideposts. I think this is, this is the same thing. As we move the organization forward, we want you to. To guide the organization in this way or consider these elements as your, you and other boards. And, and the future operators of the utility are taking that into account. Sometimes it'll identify a specific problem, but other times it's really to ensure that the organization is, is giving due consideration. To things like DEI and its decision-making and its products and services and, and its compensation, its hiring practice. You know, it's, you go down the list of what those directives are going to be. But this is consistent with that and I think the outcomes will, will guide the utility. Maybe even opposed to Commissioner Brown's comment, which is to fix something. It's really, I see it more of, more as a guidepost as to how we want the, the organization to perform and how we want the organization to do that.
Just wanted to acknowledge that these conversations are really awkward and difficult. And to your point, we all only have the perspective that we have, right? That's the entire point. And so we need to continue to learn. And so I think that this is a great opportunity to, to go on this process as a team. To further expand our vision and move towards these components. So with that, hearing that those are a good starting point and that if we need to change the framework later as we move along, because this is a learning process, we can always do that. So with that, then, that feedback, that's very helpful. The timeline and the kind of process that we're proposing tonight is, for the roadmap, is that phase one. Would start tonight. It would include tonight and the future, the, the next board work session. We had previously scheduled that for June twentieth. That will need to be rescheduled. So whenever that gets rescheduled, those two work sessions are included in this phase one. And really the intent there is to at least get down on paper our initial thoughts about policy segments, A, B, and C. So the rationale, the purpose, and get some definitions to some terminology so we can have shared understanding. Then as we move into phase two, and, and as part of phase one, we'll, we'll talk about some of those components here in a moment. As we move into phase two, it's really about furthering the next two components, which is what are the areas of focus that we want to bring into this policy? And are, are there any particular goals or metrics that we want to set? And then that would get us to an initial draft policy that we can adopt by the end of the year. Knowing that as we do with all our policies, as we learn more, we can revise and update and improve on those versions moving forward. So then phase three would go into implementation work and we can start doing some of that work so that we can then circle back and say, what's missing? Where do we need to go from here? So based on one-on-ones, we had kind of anticipated four meetings this year on these topics. And that seemed to be the sweet spot between everybody's feedback in terms of the right level of engagement. So I'm going to give you all a chance to reflect on this and give any feedback in just a moment. But I'm going to go into a few more details about specifically what we hope to accomplish in phase one, again, April and June. It'd be building that common language and the understanding of the why based on what we know today. And we have brought a consultant onboard. It's a firm that was recommended here from the board. This is a firm, it's local, it's Eugene, Hathaway Monroe. It's a small firm that has extensive experience working with public boards focused on organizational development and strategy development. So the purpose of this initial engagement, they'd be here to help us just with phase one. And they were very clear about the boundaries on where they can help us and where they feel like their limitations are. So their, their goal is to just really help frame and define the approach and the scope of this work for a public organization like EWEB. They have provided kind of the one-on-one level of introductory training. And we would hope to bring that, bring them in at the next work session to provide some of that training in an educational setting. And then they also have experience with handing off this type of work to other DEI subject matter experts and other consultants. So they would help us with some of that research to identify where we would go next if additional consulting support was of interest to move forward. So that's Hathaway Monroe. And what we'd hope to do at the next session, what we would like to propose as a structure for the next work session. That would still be part of phase one is that we would provide that, like I mentioned, the diversity, equity, inclusion, one-on-one training component with those consultants. And that would really focus on understanding more of these terms, understanding more what DEI looks like in leading organizations and help further the why. Why do organizations engage in this work? To some of your questions, Commissioner Brown. And then the deliverables that would be part of that meeting as well, that staff would work on and bring to you to react to. We would be able to present you with some options for additional DEI subject matter expert consultants that could lead us into phases two and beyond. And how they like to work with organizations of EWEB size, our industry potentially, or public organizations that have boards like we do. And then we would build on the initial feedback we've gotten from tonight to bring to you an initial draft. Of the first part of the policy that would outline the vision, the purpose, and the definitions that we could start from. So that by the time we were finished with phase one, we would hopefully have that first part of that policy developed. So I would like to pause and propose to you two questions. One, what are your learning objectives for this kind of one-on-one training? We would want to give the consultants some specific guidance on things you might hope to learn more about. And beyond what we, we are already planning here, is, is that the right. Information that you'd like or what other learning objectives would you like? And then are there additional desired deliverables that we would come back to you all with at the next meeting and provide you more information with for staff?
I'll just add on real quick. Sue, to. Mr. Borowski, training can take place in a more of a closed session, so. Free to have conversations and interactions. Certainly need to be. Boarded, so. Just throw that out.
That wouldn't be the, during the work session, that would be outside of this time. Well, I'll jump in. Learning objectives. I mean, for me, I would like to. Kind of understand the breadth of the items out there that they would typically. that they would typically recommend that our organization look out for. So when we talk about, I think, RACE is one that comes up, obviously, in this sort of discussion. But I think there are others that, especially for people that, let's say, like 35 and older, that maybe don't experience this much. Because I've, what I've seen kind of coming out of the university is that it's very much a part of their culture and ingrained in what they do to talk about their pronouns. And that was something, when I did this training, it was very helpful for me to understand more about that. And I think that that, even though I went through that training, it's great to have that refresher because it doesn't come up as much for me. And I think, you know, for E-Web as a perspective, as we look to recruit placements and our workforce ages, that kind of topic and around that range is, is going to be useful and valuable for people to understand what that looks like so that the next generation of people coming in who have been more ingrained in that and have a better understanding of that, that we understand that too and we can, you know, bring that into our culture. So for me, definitely around the pronouns and just the breadth of, what are the items that we need to look out for? The, the ways in which we may not be inclusive in policy, maybe that we unintentionally exclude or don't recruit in a diverse way. Those are, I know that's kind of a rambling answer, but that's where I'm at. So definitely looking for experts to help, kind of like, here we go, please. Okay.
Go ahead.
I was also gonna add, I, I've tried training through my job on, things like generational poverty and how the culture is different. And I think a lot about how we serve every, every income, we serve everybody. And so maybe digging a little bit deeper in there, especially because one of the things that we do, that we're proud of, is providing assistance for people with limited income, but, with limited income, experienced generational poverty. But there just is a component that I think would be interesting for us to learn about how people access information. So that, I think that could be helpful. I also think that they're a really well-functioning board and I'm really grateful to be part of it. But I do think that part of the DEI work is us to kind of oversee policies for the whole organization. But I think that there's some kind of board level work perhaps that we could look at. I, I think about how we set policies of the climate policy or we set all these things up there in place. And I would just want to make sure that whatever policies that we're adopting, that if there's turnover on the board, people, we have people with different backgrounds come on, that we make sure that we're on the way that reflects these policies. I think, because I don't.
I think I understand what you're getting at. So there's a corporate function and people had experience in that corporate functions as far as applying DEI to.
Did I understand, is part of that answer that you're just giving that you want something that will live beyond just this group? You want something that will be able to protect these values that you want to be inclusive and foster belonging beyond just the people that are here in this room today?
I also wanted to say one last thing, that my camera is not working. So if people are watching this, my camera is not on. It's not working on my computer.
For me, something that I would like to learn, especially from, from the people who've done this before, from the consultants, a lot of this is ethereal, or I don't know if that's the right word, but kind of squishy, I'll just say squishy. What I would like to see would be tangible ways that a policy like this would be implemented, right? From other organizations that they've done. How, you know, what I wrote down with it is, how will this be used, right? In the day-to-day type of, they've done this with several different people. For me, if you can give real-world examples of how the policy filters down into an organization, that would help me learn more than just a bunch of that type of thing. That's just kind of the way my mind works. It's not the artistic side, even though I have some artistic side in part of my work. But it's more of a, the scientific side. So me, that's how I look at it. So that would be something I would like to see.
Sure, sure. I agree with everything that everybody said. And to, to add on to that, I need to be educated on definitions and glossaries because, you know, I just trying to figure out what white adjacent and model minority means. I mean, when you said on the climate policy that historically underserved and upper rhythm, who says that and who makes that determination, underserved and what? And what, I mean, what's the criteria? And so having a glossary or something so I can learn these terms and understand them better when we implement policy? Because those terms are gonna come up. And I certainly don't want to chime in on something I don't at least think I understand because it's hard enough with the utility industry. It takes 10 years to figure out what they're talking about. And so if you could help me with some of those definitions and, and the genesis of where they come from, what's the basis for it? That would really be helpful for me.
That's what I was gonna suggest to you, have defined and review terms. That seems like the best idea that we need to do is just get shared language so we can have the conversation together. And then I assume as well that the, that conversation will help you and consultants kind of understand where some of our collective understanding is and isn't, and identify opportunities for us to gain more shared understanding and fill some of those gaps where they exist. I would also say that I am totally game for doing, you know, if there are good online segments that we can do at home to increase our total ability to use our collective understanding. I think that'd be, I personally would be open to that. And deliverables there, but.
Third ideas? That's super helpful feedback. We will bring that back to the consultants. And I, I really appreciate your willingness to think about reading things in advance or watching things if that's an opportunity. So, Frank, if you want, before we move on, do you want to say a little bit?
I, I guess this is the, when I think about DEI, we, I think we all tend to lump it as into one issue. And there's definite differences between the D, the E, and the I. And there's how they apply, what they mean, the definitions. And, and how, you know, I, I think it's really important for us to, to understand the, sort of the tangible realized benefits that, that organizations who are more mature in this are seeing. And so that we have a benchmark or a guidepost as to what's possible and, and what the gaps are and what the opportunities are for us. So I think a lot of that is, is around benchmarking, understanding definitions. Because ultimately, I do, I do see this as a policy that guides how we do things. And it's sort of like asking a group to referee a game that they don't want to play. And, and so we need to understand the game. And in this case, it means understanding the value of it, understanding how it's implemented, how other organizations are doing it. So that at the end of the day, we can say, yeah, this policy seems right to us, even though we know it's gonna be continuous improvement and opportunities to do that. But we feel like we've gone down this road together enough to say, yeah, this, this feels like a policy that will guide us and we'll be able to evaluate whether it's working or not.
There's one other sort of nuance on the, the training question. I think our original vision was that the, the training would be for the board and Frank and maybe Kelly and I would be there. But the option would be also for maybe the executive team to join too. So we don't have to have an answer for that right now either. Just setting that out there. Or, or just the board does it. That as well. So that is a sort of organizational detail to ponder.
I have a gut reaction to that. I would, I think it's beneficial for the board to do that with the group around the table here. And I think it's beneficial for the managers to do it separately, maybe not in that group. Because, and, and I, and I throw that out there because there's a, there's a different level of the people in the room. And I would like that group to be able to learn and have those experiences in a, where they might feel a lower risk setting than having us in the room with them. But I think it would be beneficial, I mean, personally, I think it would be beneficial for both groups to have that opportunity.
I agree. My other thing. We're physically closer together too. I feel like we're, you know, it's like a big issue or it's like awkward or whatever. But it's also awkward because we're like across the roof from each other. So I just hope that when we do this, that we're physically closer together.
That's a beautiful point. In fact, I was gonna talk about that a little bit later. But even the board setting is something to consider in how you receive the public and how people might want to testify. So if you're struggling, just think about somebody walking off the street. So I think that's a, that's a pretty great observation. And so I'm sure that folks doing the training will, will definitely want something comfortable.
So I guess I, I follow it a little bit different than, than you do as far as bringing in executive staff. The reason being is that they're gonna be the ones that are gonna need to implement it. And if they're here and can get the feel of how the policy was developed and, and what we as a board want the policy to be implemented, it's easy, to me, that's easier than going to the legislative history, right? This is what the board came down with. And now we're gonna do a training for you to, to teach you what the board is, is wanting you to get. So for me, again, it goes to how will it be used? And if the, if the exec, if the exec team is in the room while it's being developed, I think that they may have a better understanding of how to use it.
When I talk about that, I was just talking about the training portion so that people understand kind of the framework and the options on the table and can ask questions that maybe don't feel comfortable in a public setting. But the policy absolutely has to be made in a public setting for us.
I guess I was confused about, because he said, you were talking about bringing in the execs at that. At what point was?
Yeah, I, I thought we were talking about the training.
Just, just the training portion, the education portion of it, yeah. To, to get the terms grounded and all those things. So.
So you're thinking it should be done?
I think the training, I was suggesting that the training be done. There's one level here that we do the training for us. And then there's a separate session for the manager types to do that with their own cohort, at their own level. And then we all come back together and we make the policy together. But we have that kind of uncomfortable learning process in our own cohorts. But that's not where the policy is developed. The policy is developed together. But that's just how I took it.
I agree with you, Sonia. I just think that, first of all, it'd be easier to do it in a smaller group. I think that there's just an element of familiarity and trust that people need to have to do this. And not that, you know, your ship doesn't trust us or whatever. But I just think like, we know each other in a certain way. And I think that with the other management, we just don't, we don't interact and work together like that all, all that often. And I think people will, their own cohorts. And I just plan to get people feeling more relaxed and laid in their comfort.
I, I think it's probably best for some of this to be done by the board itself. Managers, executives, supervisors are following the process. I'll just, I'll just tell you that. And I think it is important that they understand the basis of how it's developed. I also think there's a little bit of value in some degree of separation. It's almost like having an auditor and you have your accountants. And there's some checks and balances that are important in that process. If, if there's a board policy that's developed and it can't be implemented, clearly, that's a problem with the policy. And we need to be able to revisit that. I do appreciate the point as far as knowing the basis for how this was developed and the reasoning is important. And that's gonna be part of my job and Rod's job and the executive team to make sure that that happens. But I can tell you, I mean, there's 20 people listening in tonight in the conversation. Some managers, some executives, some supervisors. And, and I suspect they'll follow along with the process. But I also think it's a good check and balance to have a little bit of separation there.
All right, so then, as we move to Phase Two, the new destination on the road. The intent with Phase Two would be to continue again with moving beyond the first three components of the policy. So moving beyond A, B, and C and into those directives and what that implementation might look like. And this is an opportunity where we would be able to bring some of that discussion to the board. And this is an opportunity where we could bring in an additional consultant, a DEI implementation consultant. That's something that we could do in Phase Two. I'm gonna set that aside for right now. That's not part of tonight's discussion point because we will know more when we come back in the next work session, when we do our training and when we've done our research on what other DEI expert consultants are out there and how do they like to work with organizations like E-Web. So I'm gonna set that question aside, but I'm just gonna leave that out there that at the point of Phase Two, we could go into working with somebody at that point. Or we could wait and bring in an external consultant into the implementation phase. So lots of options there. But as we move into Phase Two, that'll take us through the end of the year. Its purpose is to, again, finish off those directives and, and the reporting process. And there'll be two work sessions where we can work through that and identify what other folks have done for areas of focus, what frameworks are there, and then how we might get consent to adopt a policy by December. So question for discussion, are these the right tasks for Phase Two? And is this amount of time, we've identified again, these four work sessions through the end of the year, two that would be in Phase One, two that would be in Phase Two. In Phase Two, there, there's one in August that we've identified and one in October. So those are the two timeframes, the work sessions. And then we would hope to adopt a policy by the end of the year. Great tasks, great investment of time. I mean, for me, I, I think it's great that we have the placeholders. And as we kind of go along the process, we'll kind of figure out, do we need more or do we need less? So right now, for me, the time is fine. The tasks seem fine. But again, we're gonna learn quite a bit in the first phases and then we'll determine, is this the right thing? So I hope that we keep asking these questions. Okay, we've, we've gone down this, are we still going in the right direction? Okay, we've gone down this, are we, are we still going in the right direction? So for me, yes.
So can you define what a DEI implementation consultant would be? What would be their background, their experience? And, you know, I mean, when you're looking at the proposals and you have to put an RFP out, what job experience or criteria? I mean, I don't understand what an implementation consultant would do, so tell me what they would do.
So there's probably, there's companies that are used to coming in and doing a BYDEI program for companies our size or large, so they've got a lot of experience in surveying, designing. Part it depends on what we want to do, our implementation phase, but as far as this goes here, they would come in and say, hey, here's, I just talked about, hey, you have experience in this area with the size of company and the utility, and here are the things that are worth getting asked for, and so they would be able to look at this all from that benchmarking perspective, because this is what they do the whole time. There's a number of companies out there that, who's going to help us, RFP, and this, we decide to take that.
Well, I was just going to say, an implementation consultant might be something that we do as staff anyway, because we might have a policy that the board is providing direction on, and we need someone to help us to find the ways to deploy that into the organization and where it applies. So we might have a particular issue and we need some experience from someone that says, well, this, this is how this can, the rubber meets the road when you're talking about rate-making policies, or to really, it's a, someone who can help deploy whatever policy is developed into sort of tangible actions inside the organization.
That begs my question, then, the timing of when we would bring them into this process? So wouldn't they come in after we've adopted a policy and help you implement it with the staff in your organization rather than come in with us?
My perspective, go ahead.
Yeah, my vision is more of this, they would become more like a partner, so you know, on that, hey, to help shortcut any special things that we, I don't know, people can recognize, but there's some, we don't want to step on anyone. But I think it's really important, so bring a partner along, come with us.
I get the sense that you're looking for some tangible examples. I give you a couple of tangible examples, because as we think about the implementation, right, and this was going to be the next slide, so we can go back to the previous discussion, but in terms of where we could go, right, and we've got this slide up here that's got two different paths that go in the forest, we could go simultaneously down multiple paths, or we could pick one and do that first and then come back and do the other path. So there's lots of different things. We heard tangible examples of work that the board specifically could do, so I have a question here about, does the board want to engage in specific topics? Things like, how specifically can you bring a DEI lens to understanding our budget? How do we look through a DEI lens at our capital plans? How do we look through a DEI lens at the board meetings themselves? We just talked about some of those, you know, tangible points of how do we engage the public? How do we make it comfortable for people to come to a board meeting and give public comment? Are there structures or changes we could make to the format of our meetings or the format of our process to make it more accessible, to remove barriers, to make it more comfortable, to make people feel welcome, so that we get more voices in the room and those voices that are in the room actually feel comfortable and able? So that's some tangible examples on the board. From staff work, there could be a number of different tangible examples, right? And the frameworks that I've looked at usually break things down into leadership and organizational commitment, people, and with people, they've got the internal component of hiring, recruitment, emotions, disciplinary actions internally, as well as then the partnerships in the community aspect of people, how are we engaging in an external way? How do we do that in a comfortable or inclusive way? How do we remove barriers? How do we provide access? And then there's the structures component, right? Our physical buildings, how do we make those comfortable? Can people access our materials, our programs, our resources? If they speak a different language, if they have different physical abilities, if they have different needs, from a variety of different perspectives, how can we make those things comfortable? So those are the types of tangible projects we could take on, we can baseline some of those things, we can identify what we could do to improve, and then we can take on projects. We can do pieces of that at different times, but this is where a consultant can come in and provide some of that guidance along the way to say, this might be a great place for eWeb to start.
Excellent answer. Thank you very much. Get a 10 on that one.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
So, you know, back to phase two, you know, we're trying to identify just some of those headings of those directives and what we might be able to set for goals and priorities so that we know some of those areas. Do we want to do all of these things? Do we want to do that staff work, the priorities in either of those areas? Do we want to hire somebody? If we were to hire somebody either as a consultant or as an internal staff, how do we set that person up for success? Are we bringing them in into a place where they can be successful? And then what is the reporting? How do we set those metrics and come back? So there's a number of questions that would come in phase three, and we will know more by the time we get there, right? So this is just foreshadowing, but these are the types of questions that we'll be asking for, and there's no, you don't need to decide that today, so the pressure's off. But wanted to give you a foreshadow of where we're going with this.
I don't know who to raise my hand to, I'm kind of looking around. We go back to phase two just for a second. The one thing that I like about what's up here in the first two bullets is that you primarily tasked staff slash staff and consultant with providing draft language, and I really like that because I think where this board does its best work is where it has something sort of tangible to start with, and when the, when the sheet is completely blank, I think we all struggle a little bit on how to get this going. And so I like the fact that there's a role for the consultant and staff to do some, some things where we are leveraging the expertise in this room with, it's a bit, a bit more concrete, I don't want to say concrete, it sounds like it's developed, but it's something that can be molded as opposed to not having anything to start with. So I just wanted to make that observation, and if there's members on the board who disagree with that, and then that's, that's great, but it seems like this board does its best work when there's something that can be tailored and molded and sculpted as opposed to just created from nothing.
I think this format is not very easy to create out of nothing, it takes other thought and, you know, time and effort and discussion, and this format is not great for that, so I appreciate that as well.
I also think when we get into the implementation, that there, if you look at how the policies are structured now and how the board provides oversight with very specific things like budgets, capital plans, strategic plans, annual goals, there's, there's opportunities to implement very specifically already laid out for the board, but then when you look beyond that, you have to start looking at how the board participates in policy and in principles that are developed. And I'll give you an example, Brian, who left the room conveniently, is, is tasked with developing a five-year rate design plan that we want to have sort of teed up for the board to take a look at next year, that's going to really talk about changing how we're pricing our products over the next five years. Well, that's, that's an area where there's DEI components to it that need to be insured as, as we go through that. So there will be very specific examples of how principles, like we have rate-making principles, and equity is one of them, but is it appropriate for this board to then apply a policy to some very specific things? So a lot of that's built in to the way the policies are crafted now, and so I think when we're working on this one, we have to see, well, how, how and where does not just this board, but a board 10 years from now, apply this to, to the areas of oversight and control and guidance and governance and those, those things that the board is chartered with? So I think it's important when you look at implementation that the board is not going to be expected to implement this across the organization, but it will be tasked with ensuring that these policies are met in the things that the, the board has oversight for. Anyway, that's just a, a general manager's perspective.
Any other feedback on, are these the right tasks? Is this the right investment of time? I'm hearing that so far, we're on the right path and we'll keep asking those questions. Okay, we've already talked a little bit about what phase three could look like, and so I'm going to move on to there and just circle back to the conceptual framework and say, these are the three phases we've identified, the timeline, the number of meetings, the deliverable timeframe, any last comments on this roadmap for now? So now it's time to turn to the third part of tonight's agenda, so thank you for the feedback on the roadmap. The third part of the agenda is to really look at having a discussion about what do we know so far about DEI work and why an organization would do this, right? And we know that this work is both personal, which is why it's awkward and hard and tricky, and it's also organizational. And so what we wanted to do is start with this process and open up this first question to say, we know that DEI work is personal, we know that we've had experiences at the individual level and how to relate to one another, and we know, we've seen things in media and the news, we know that there are reasons that people want to get into this. So wanted to start by asking the question, why does this work matter to you personally? And then we can go into, in a moment, why does this work matter for eWeb specifically? Let's start with this first question.
I think in the one-on-ones on the interviews, you asked this basic question, and I think a lot of good responses, so in some ways it's an opportunity to, so of course, we heard all this, right? But if you wanted to share with the other people.
I mean, for me personally, I feel a, an obligation as a representative of the community to try to move eWeb forward. From the past experiences that I've had and knowing that I don't, I don't have the whole realm of knowledge, everybody has their own perspective, but I feel a real imperative to try to help create a more just and equitable organization to help move that forward in the community. And I think eWeb is a great place to be able to do that because it touches so many different parts of community. I mean, everybody has power and electricity and water, and in the ways that we do and we can move it forward every bit helps. And I have a young son who's 11, and I would like him to be in that society that cares about these kinds of things. In whatever way that I can help move that forward in organizations that have a lot of influence, that's kind of why I care about this, what we need to do to promote the society.
This is a more personal, actually personally, not so much related to eWeb, but I'll just share, so I'm Jewish, and there are many ways, which I am like a member of the majority, I'm white, you know, I, there's nothing that looks any different about me, but I will say that in my lived experience, there are a lot of ways where our society is set up in ways that make it sometimes difficult for me to practice my religion the way that I want to. So not equating this to race or anything like that, but I will say that I do have experience of what it's like to try to have to ask for certain times off of work when it's maybe inconvenient, but it's an important holiday, or for my kids in school, what it was like always having to, not always, but often having to argue with teachers about them not going to school on certain days. So I guess I just personally have some experience of how it feels to be a little bit different than the new system. And I know that it can be really difficult at times to kind of speak up, stand up for what you believe in when everything is kind of set up in a different way. And I imagine if you're a different race or, I don't know, sexual orientation or something like that, it can be even more difficult, but personally, I feel like I bring that kind of empathy.
Why does the work matter personally? Well, I guess it's because, one of the reasons it matters to me personally was because I stood up and asked people to vote for me to help guide an organization. So I feel a burden to help represent my constituents. As far as personally, if I weren't in this role that I've, that I've taken on, it would be easy for me just to kind of sit back and, and, you know, okay, I've got, I've got to use these prodom now and now, and I've got to do, do these things or that thing because that's the societal norm today. But since I'm helping to guide an organization like this, I feel a responsibility to further myself so that I can represent the people that I'm here to represent. So I'm looking at it as a, you know, I need to, I need to better myself because I am representing more than just myself in a position that I, that I chose to, chose to take on.
If anyone wants to jump in, it's okay too. They're on that as well. Everybody has to speak every time. If you're uncomfortable, you don't have to.
I really appreciate people sharing.
Just pretty quickly, I guess for me, I recognize that everybody sees the way I do trainings and had some experiences in, with former employers where I recognize where my eyes have been opened to ways in which other people with different languages or different skin experience the world, and it helps me to see the barriers that they encounter that I wasn't even aware of, and I can't remember how many barriers it's like. So a lot of it's just about learning, or about areas that we put in place that we don't even think about because of the way treated. So just tell me more about that, and then professionally, the same thing, just how do we remove barriers that we don't know exist, but it's valuable to do so that more people in our community have better access to the same things that we're trying to that we're trying to provide and that we have access to. So I'm last.
If you want to be.
No, not a problem. I agree with, you know, what everybody else said, and especially John about representing a constituency. But personally, you know, all my grandchildren are either Asian-American, African-American or Native American. Maybe 50% or less. And so I've got that in my family and I understand I want, if I can help build a framework in any organization or institution that will help them navigate that they go from the third grade to junior college. But, you know, personally, I, you know, when I was drafted and came back to this town from Vietnam and we weren't really looked upon as good people. In fact, we were ostracized, called baby killers. And I had a little bit, I called it temporary discrimination because I was labeled as one of those, you know, couldn't wear your uniforms, couldn't do anything, people spit on you. And it wasn't a very pleasant experience and that's embedded in me forever. And I have a lot of friends that are really diverse, whether it be religion or race or whatever. And, and so being that old, my guy, the bubble boy that's lived here his entire life, I still think it's extremely important and something that if we can help make this a better organization and just, you know, when there's one instance or a million instances, if this continues a legacy to make it better, why not? So I'm in.
I guess in fairness, since everybody else is sharing, I'm going to go very pragmatic. I grew up in a family, I had a sister, parents and, but my parents were very inclusive. And so I grew up in this idea and they would ask, you know, like, we're on vacation, what do you want to do? So I'd say dinosaur version. And they, they included us, my sister and I, and helped us do the things we wanted to do. So they involved us. So I went through school and into my work life and I didn't know any better. And I found inclusion helped these concepts and thinking about getting people involved, teamwork. It worked, it worked. Where it really hit home was when I went to, not out, years to work in consulting and I got to fly around and get the group I worked in was multi-dimensional. And I really liked, I'm going to quote you, but really liked something that Sandra said, you know, one-on-one, which was diversity creates creativity. And, and that is so true from my experience. And so very pragmatically, if we're trying to solve all these problems that we're facing, we've got so many opportunities. Understanding diversity and inclusion in a very pragmatic sense, I think, in a business sense. There are dozens of studies to show this, of course, but that's been my experience and that's one of my interests.
Yeah, I'll just share as well too, just briefly. And I just really want to echo a lot of what I've heard. You know, I, I really feel like this work can improve lives. And that's really where I'm coming, you know, I know I see on a regular basis that hatred and discrimination are literally killing people or making people very sick from the trauma and the emotional toll that it's taking. And I think a lot about each person having unique gifts and talents. And I see all these barriers that come into their ability to really shine with those unique gifts and talents. And I think about all the problems that the world is facing and what if everyone could bring their unique talents to bear, right? And their gifts to bear on the world and what kind of a amazing place would that be? And so as a public employee, I feel a very strong responsibility to figure out how we can allow that, those gifts and talents to shine, remove those barriers to our constituents. I feel like we have the power and the responsibility to think about that for our public institution, to figure out how we can make the world a better place and trying to improve lives.
Were you pointing at me?
No, do you, I, I just want to give you an opportunity to say that you wanted to, but no pressure.
No pressure, it's, it's enlightening to listen to your perspective on this. I guess I've, maybe this was ingrained when I was a kid, a real strong sense of responsibility, things that you're accountable to or things that you're working on or people you're interacting with. And when I do see such polarization around the, the world and hatred, I feel very compelled and it's, it's been not, not just here because I, most of my adult life, I've not lived in Eugene, I was born here and left and, and came back. And throughout those experiences, I've just really had this sense that, especially when you're in an organization that is as influential in a community that E-Web is, I feel responsible for that. And to, to help facilitate that and to set up the organization to be, to be better in the future. And for me, that, that means to be empathetic, to be inclusive, to leverage diversity so that you can have creative ideas and, and more perspectives and better problem solving. And you need inclusivity to, to be able to, to do that. And then you need equity to look at this from an outcome perspective, not just a starting point perspective. So for me, I, I feel a high level of responsibility, independent, quite honestly, of what this board decides as a policy, that we need to set up the organization to be able to, to do this going forward and to be better. And I guess the other thing that has always been ingrained in me is maybe this, this impatience or not being satisfied, not being satisfied. And so always sort of looking at what's next. That's a personal problem, I suppose. But, you know, what's next for the organization? How does, how does this set up future boards, future general managers, future employees, future customers to be, to be better served? So that's what really, personally, it matters to me for that reason. And then also just the people I personally care about and, and wanting them to have opportunities and work in environments and be in communities where this is valued.
I just really want to say thank you to everyone for being willing to share. Whether you choose to share in the future or not, I mean, I think it's just a humble act. So thank you, I appreciate it. So now we want to move into the next component, right? And this is really intended to be a brainstorm activity. You know, Rod and I spent some time thinking about how does this relate to E-Web, right? We just talked about where we're coming from, from a personal standpoint. And now I want to think about it from an organizational standpoint. And there are a number of reasons why understanding diversity, equity and inclusion issues relates to E-Web. Some are big and squishy and, you know, maybe, you know, based on our values. Others are really tangible and nitty gritty and down to the, you know, particular issue, right? And all of those matter. And so what I wanted to do is just give, you know, a couple of examples that Rod and I had talked through, you know, and, and you've all said a lot of this so far. So we want to meet the needs of our customer owners. We want to help ensure our customers are seen and heard to make sure that we're providing the services that our customers and our community need and serve the entire community. We want to affirm that these are our values and, and not be afraid to say them out loud and make sure that the public hears that this is part of our values. The themes and the concepts of DEI might seem obvious, but it really is important to speak them out loud and state them explicitly and do that on a public setting. We want to ensure that employees can live the values of safety, right? Not just physical safety, but also psychological safety. And we want to support our community. So we want to provide a work environment where people feel safe to participate and be a valued voice in the entire E-Web community. And then we also want to move forward with this continuous improvement culture, creating an environment just like we're trying to create here, where it's safe to be vulnerable, it's safe to make mistakes, it's safe to continue to learn. We all know that we don't have all the answers and we're supporting each other in that. But also hold us accountable for our actions. When we do make a mistake, we acknowledge it, we learn from it and we move forward. So what I'd like to do is, you know, that's just a few thoughts. A lot of those are more in the, the big, you know, squishy realm. And so I want to just acknowledge that there's many different reasons why this work can be important to E-Web. Down to, you know, you know, big things like we were just talking about, down to little things like recruiting or grants or some other things that we'll talk about. And we have some examples to go through, but wanted to open it up. What are all the ways that you can think of that DEI work can matter for E-Web?
I think a lot about public participation. So we often, you know, have, have public participation. We want to, we want to get our feedback or we want to make sure that the public is informed or feels able to come to us when they have something to say. And I do think that these board meetings sometimes make it really difficult and can be kind of intimidating and off-putting for, for some people. Some people might feel super comfortable coming and testifying or sitting through one of these meetings, but I think that it impedes participation in some ways. And then I also think like just even serving on the board, right? Like this is a pretty, pretty formal setting and also be intimidating for people. So as in the future, as new people come onto the board, if we really want to attract a diverse cohort of people, then maybe we just need to think about how we function as a board.
Yes. So in the first one, meet the needs of our customers owner and help ensure that all customers are seen and heard to our services. One of, one of the things that has always been a challenge to me in, in that aspect is I see you, I hear what you're saying, but I may not be able to go down that road because the, the, it just doesn't work, right? If somebody is testifying and they're, they're asking us to do something that just isn't pragmatic, let's say. How, what I wanted to be able to do is figure out the way that I, you know, I can say, I hear you. Thank you for your testimony. But to that person, if I then turn around and take an action item that is going to take the lake at Lieberg out and they've been staying, coming to 10 meetings saying, don't take the lake, lake of Lieberg out, they're going to feel that I'm not hearing them. So I guess the question that I have with that is, how do I acknowledge that I understand that? And I can acknowledge it knowing that I've heard it, but I have to go, I'm making a different decision. But how do I convey that to them that they felt that they've been heard? That their, that their thoughts have been, been used.
Well, and just to speak to that, I feel like sometimes some of our public participation is a little performative, right? Like not necessarily done in a super meaningful way. And it's not because we've set up the process to be that way, but that's just kind of how it feels.
Yeah, and I mean, and that's, that's kind of the position, you know, that's where, you know, you talk about the formality of the board. That's almost a function of being a board. You know, you have to be semi, semi-formal because we are taking policy decisions and making, making decisions on the inputs that we've been given. So I guess when I saw that, that our customers are seen and heard, that's an area that is difficult to convey sometimes.
I don't want to take up a lot of time, but I just, I also think about like, we make decisions about how people are able to pay their bills, for instance. So we close our lobby, talking about when the city takes over, orders what, how we're going to pay to that people can come in. To me, that's kind of a issue that kind of falls right in here because it might be easy to assume that most people can pay their bills online or whatever, but there's a certain segment of the population that he doesn't have regular access to the internet. And participate in regular banking. Like that, or also there are, I've heard from some older customers, find it really hard to engage with the website and figure things out that way. So it's so much of our stuff to be internet.
A diversity perspective, that what that for me gets at that creativity that about having all of these different ideas and viewpoints and perspectives that we are putting together to create new ideas and also figure out what the gaps are and what we're doing. And having, and having a goal that's comfortable bringing those ideas and being a part of this organization to share them. So that's, that's kind of the, the diversity side of it. Then there, the equity side of it for me is, you know, we have, we have rates and how do those rates impact different groups? And we have different investments that we have to implement and how, how do we equitably and fairly maybe cite those? Are we citing those in a place where it's going to impact a group that's already been negatively impacted by something else? So how do we kind of spread the burden and/or the benefit in ways that are fair, understanding what fairness and what, what other barriers there are to the people that are impacted? Fairness may be different to one group over another because of the background and the treatment that they've had for a long period of time. And then inclusion for me is, you know, how do we, how do we reach these different voices? And like many was talking about, from a, even from a board perspective and getting voices here. I know it was a pain, when, when I first started in this organization, we only met in person and we didn't have a computer. And then we've kind of moved to, through COVID, we now have this hybrid situation. And I would argue that, I hope that we keep the hybrid situation. Yes, is it maybe a pain to have a computer in the room and all of us having to, you know, deal with the technology? But it creates opportunities for people who maybe work later in the day. Or, you know, they can come and, and maybe they participate in the public hearing on a break. Or they have kids at home and are a single, you know, single person, but they want to voice their opinion. At least there's more of an opportunity for them to come and provide that. You know, and I appreciate that we have different ways to get the information out there. And I'll say this too, when we went through the Lieberg process, when we went through the process for citing, it's part of having the process that meets people where they're at. And so to meet people where they're at, we have to understand where they're coming from. And that's, you know, I mean, understanding differences is how we get, and we need better policies. And, and having a variety of options and, you know, the Lieberg, yeah, we had 20 different meetings on that. That was because it was a very big decision. And do we have to have 20 different meetings? No, but we do need to make sure that whatever process we're setting up for the decision we're trying to make, we meet people at the different places. Maybe it's different times of day, maybe it's, you know, different formats or different ways that people learn and engage. And, and that to me is what this work is really important for. And as we have a board discussion, you know, understanding that people don't engage in the same way. Maybe to get people's ideas out, they need to be asked. And that's, that's one of the extrovert versus introvert sorts of things. Now, now we're in a meeting here, but that might be different at a managerial level. I have a staff member who's fantastic, but they will not speak up unless I ask them for it. And, but they have really great ideas. I mean, I need to give them space to do that and understand what that looks like for them. And, you know, as an organization, I think that's just a recognition of where are people coming from? And again, we all bring our own perspectives, we don't know everybody. So bringing that diversity in helps us all learn together. Okay, that's, that's my spiel.
I won't repeat all that's been said because that would be silly. But thank you all for But thank you all for articulating many of the, the many things that we could, many ways in which this effort could help us be a better organization. I would just add a few, Mindy mentioned the, the technology accessibility, which to me is a huge piece, and, and really all the ways in which people interface with our services and programs. You're trying to make sure that, that people with all different types of abilities and skills can access our programs. And part of that is like language accessibility, right? Just thinking about if I'm an English speaker, do I, can I access our programs? So that's just one example. And then the other is, briefly, I think about hiring processes and practices, but there's a, a number of steps that can be taken to just broaden the pool that we even are considering for jobs, just in the way we advertise our jobs. So, um, you know, there's a, a host of opportunities there to diversify our workforce.
So lastly, um, why do you think DEI matters for E-Web? So let's just, we have several examples. We're going to go to AMI hopefully soon, and that's going to really diversify and, and how it's going to affect a diverse group of people that are our customers. Because some people are going to get it, and they're going to have the technology to implement it. Some people don't have clue, it's like me, that, you know, I don't have a digital watch because I don't understand it. So how we make it, it's equitable to everybody so they can all take advantage of the technological advantages that we're going to promote through time views and everything else. And I think that really matters, and so we have that equity part in it. Another equity thing is like, you know, when, um, we charge people to pump water up in the South Hills, but we don't charge people up the river because it costs 14% more to provide their electric service than it does everybody else. That's an equitable thing that someday we're going to have to address. But why it works, why it matters for E-Web, I think we're going in the right direction. Having sat here and gone through the boat landing thing up in Leburg, we had to have armed guards, we almost got, I mean, it was brutal. But yet, the way we recently handled the 40th Avenue, I think that's light years of improvement. And I think it matters because we're heading in the right direction and we're going to refine something that I think has been really refined over the last decade or two in our processes. And so that's why I think it matters, because all, all it could go there. But especially with AMI, I think is going to, that's just, just an example of how we're going to have to adapt and, and recognize that there's going to be a big learning curve for a lot of people. Make sure everybody gets the full advantage of the wind behind it.
I'm listening and appreciate the, the points that are brought up. I'll, I'll provide just some categories where I think it, it really matters to us, and I, I won't get into all the specifics because I could probably be listing out a whole bunch of things for, for a long time. I think the, the recruiting and hiring is an area that's definitely applicable. I think compensation and making sure that we're equitable in our compensation practices. Opportunities for advancement within the organization is an important one. The inclusivity, whether that really drives the creativity that you're talking about, or the diverse problem solving and different perspectives, continuous improvement is another one that I, that I would mention. I, I also think that there's an opportunity, when I think about the, how this board operates, to include it in our decision-making processes, to, to test the resiliency and the out, and the, of our decisions. Almost as if it's another layer that gets worked in to the triple bottom line. So you think about social, you think about, um, economic and environmental. You have to lay this on top of that to ensure that your decisions nobody in this room is evaluated based on how many lines of wire you put up, or how many feet of, of, uh, pipe you put in the ground. This, that, the effectiveness of this group, myself included, is based on the decisions that we make. And so we have to be able to apply it to the decisions that we make. And then the other really big category, I would, I would call the customer community category, which includes the access to services that were mentioned, the outreach, ensuring people are heard and informed, not necessarily agreed with, but heard in that process. So it's access to services, um, it's equitable pricing, and some of those things that'll come out of like a rate design plan as we get new technologies and other things. So I, I would say that the other sort of bundle here is that customer community kind of piece. But all those other categories, then decisions, and then customer community. So I, I could see, you know, seven different categories of things where I would generally see this applied.
Great, that's a great list, it's a great place to start. Yeah, um, I'm thinking TimeWise as well, too. A number of examples, um, I'm gonna, should we push through those? Just, um, there's a number of examples of, of things that we've seen in the organization in terms of how we're designing our programs, how we're supporting our staff, both internally and in the community, how we're, uh, doing a number of operational things, working with tribes, grants, this is coming up with federal funding. You've all mentioned you want E-Web to go after federal funding, this is a big part of that. You know, there's a number of these types of, of components, and Rock can touch on a few too, and then we can decide if you want to take a break here in just a moment.
I think we've touched on most of these things. I, I guess what I would say is the other agencies and other companies are also doing these processes themselves and examining who they do business with, how they do business. If not business in just the buying and selling, but through the grants and issues. That's one thing. The tribal thing is, is kind of interesting. I got started on some land acknowledgement. Pretty soon, I'm, I'm learning about those things that I'd never seen before. Rides for sovereign nations, basically. How we interact with sovereign nations is, you start thinking about it like that. We have representatives to the, to the city, and to the electorate, continue doing business with tribes and, and because they, they share some of the same values we do, community and environment. So there's a lot of, so do we reach out and, and so? Need a policy for that? Not necessarily, but the policy helps create a sustained environment. These kind of things, and we evaluate our decision-making in our, our system programs. Consent items, is it the cheapest? Is it, is it the L, the E, I? See where some of these things can start coming together in opposition systems.
Yeah, so just to wrap up, you know, I think that the main things that we heard, we heard a number of other things that you all said in the one-on-ones, too. So we, we've documented a number of these things, and, and the reason that we wanted to have this discussion is that it's important for everyone to start thinking about things. We, we might all have certain ideas in our head, but there's a number of areas where these issues matter for E-Web. And figuring out that big scale and seeing places where, "Oh, I didn't even think about how, how we would might, uh, interact with a sovereign nation, or I didn't think about the signage at our facility, or I didn't think about how somebody who is blind might interact with trying to get a, a recording from the board." Or, um, you know, these kinds of things really matter. And the more we can hear how we're being asked, uh, where it can fit into our organization, the more prepared we are. So any last comments here? And, and then, okay. So we wanted to move into the policy statements and definitions next. Um, I wanted to ask at this moment, does anybody need? Do people want to stretch for a moment and then come back? Do we want to just move into policy statements and then definitions and wrap up?
Yeah, 10 more minutes, correct.
All right, so sample policies, you all had in your packet. We included five different examples of policies. What stands out to you from these examples? And what would you want or not want to see included in E-Web's DEI policy or efforts? Was there anything that really stood out?
Well, I guess I just want to say, this part feels a little premature because we haven't had the discussion about what the definition, like the working language around it. And so while it's hopeful and interesting to read these different policies, I feel like we need to have a shared language of the board that jump into, um, really talking about, like, the policy statements.
The, the kind of jumps, stood, stood out was the difference between equity and equality, and, and being able to recognize that and define that. Yeah, just because I, I'm not there, I don't know where that's at, but I, I saw it come up in two or three of the, of the people's, uh, policies. And so if it's in two or three of them, it needs to be like, that stood out, is that something that needs to be quantified, maybe? And that may be something that we learned going on, but when I, when I see, I mean, there's a lot of things that were in all of them, but there were two or three of those that it just kind of jumped out. Equity does not necessarily equate to equality.
I mean, I'm, you have staff recommendations to take, uh, others' definitions of these three terms. And I'm kind of like with Mindy, I think, you know, it's going to be our policy or their policy. And I'm, I'm okay with starting with what they have, but I don't want that to be the gospel and we just hold on. I want to, you know, we got to have a framework to start someplace. But to say that that's, that's it, we're going to take Lane County's definition of, uh, equity, uh, equity. I don't know which one it is, you've got them all three highlighted in the background, or, um, you know, I'm, I'm willing to start for that. We have to start with something, you know, you need plagiarism, that's forward, it's the lottery. So, you know, people copy our stuff all the time, and it moves it on because this thing is going to, you know, take it out of life if it's not, and we're going to be into it until the end of the year. So I'm willing to start with that, but for the caveat that we get to amend it when we go, because Tom brings up a good point, and he brings up your point. I'm okay with what you've recommended, but the ink is dry.
Do folks want to push on from the policies to the definitions, based on Mindy's comment, or Commissioner Schlossberg's comment?
What were the other thoughts? I feel kind of similarly, I think it would be good to have the training piece. And, I mean, it, it's valuable to see this, so as we start thinking about the next phases, having these, as examples that we can ponder over and kind of relate back to and see what others in the arena are doing, I think it's valuable for that. But, um, you know, and I, I did really like the policies where it very clearly states what, what we view as an organization, these different terms mean. And, you know, I think that we'll take up some of those and plagiarize where, where possible, and, and add in and modify to meet our needs, too. So I, I did like the ones that had the definitions kind of clearly outlined.
Well, one thing to note, as we move on to some of these definitions, is that many of these organizations will have a policy statement, and then they will follow that up with an action plan. And in the action plan, there's often a glossary that goes through some of, of a wide variety of terms. So we're just starting with three terms, diversity, equity, and inclusion, that we want to define. There are, uh, you know, examples here to see, there's, you can see there's a lot of similarities, there's some differences. What stood out to all of you from the definition of diversity? And what should staff consider as a draft when we come back next session?
Some of the differences that came in, some of them took the fact of trying to list all of the different groups that are, you know, considered, and then others kind of took a more broad sense. So that was one of the, as I was thinking about how we end up defining the policy, is that what, you know, what path will go down? Is it trying to list all those different types of groups? Or is it something that's more broad that has essence of including them, but maybe not spelling it out? I don't, and I don't know, maybe there's benefits, um, or costs to doing it either way. I mean, you don't want to list them all and then exclude somebody. But then also, how do you clearly define that, that we do want to intentionally look out for those groups? So that's kind of the trade-off and the, the challenge.
It's like a Goldilocks principle, right? Like, we don't want ones that are too brief, or ones that are too verbose, something that's kind of in the middle. And so when I look at these definitions, like our draft definition, E-Web is pretty brief. But then you look at Lane County, and it's pretty long. And, um, I feel like sometimes this gets to be too long, it's too much. So I think whatever it is, it needs to be just right, which maybe isn't really helpful. But I guess what I'm saying is, um, try to include as much information as possible, but not too much where you get lost and it becomes.
Goldilocks aside, um, I, I, I do think it's pretty ironic that you have diversity definitions that try to define it very specifically, and not in a diverse way. So I, I, I don't particularly, I'm not a particular fan of sort of the roster of what that includes. Because I also look at the application that we have, and it's going to evolve. The community's going to change, we're going to change. For example, when we were looking at employee engagement, we find a very drastic difference in the perspectives of union versus non-union. And I guarantee that's not listed in any diversity definition, and yet it's something that we're going to have to deal with and address. So, um, you know, I agree with the, there's a just right here, but I also think it has to be something that can evolve with us and facilitates the other definition, especially around inclusivity. So it's an observation and a little editorializing.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of piggyback on that where on these high-level things, the definitions are broad enough to encompass a lot of things. And then, as you dig down into the policy more, that's where they're flushed out, right? So, yeah, and he, I, it's like any policy, you have a policy, but then you have action items. And, yeah, so I, I kind of think the same way as far as definitions go is, this is the definition, and it's broad, and it's, it's inclusive. And then in the action items, wherever, however, or wherever those live, it's more refined to our specific organization.
Any other comments on diversity? Any other things that stood out, or else anybody?
Well, I just want to comment on something that Matt said earlier about if there's any kind of like, um, online videos or trainings or tutorials that we could watch. And I'm just wondering if, if there is, there must be some out there that we could be given the links to, that kind of very specifically maybe talk about. Talk about diversity, this is what we talk about. This is what we talk about when we talk about inclusion. And I know we're going to have a training on it, but like, just hearing John say that the thing that was jumped out at him is equity versus equality, like, there's just all these little things. And so I'm just wondering, in preparation for our next meeting, if we could just, just like little snippets, maybe the consultants, so that when we come into the next meeting, at least we, we have some kind of background on these, um, like, on these very, very, the, the vocabulary is very important.
Well, and as you can see, though, I, I guess one point that I want to make is that there is no right answer, right? You can have, uh, these different answers, and, and not everybody is cookie cutter and using the exact same thing. So one of the pieces of feedback we got from the consultant that we're working with is that it can be helpful to hear what it is and what it isn't, right? Some of these definitions say diversity is, diversity is not. And that can be helpful to see different, from a different perspective, too. So just, with that. Any other thoughts on diversity? Equity? Anything, so we already heard, um, uh, Schlosski mentioned the concept of the difference between equity and equality that stood out.
I love this picture. Throw that out there. Show that the outcome is. Yes, we may, we may give the same rates to everybody, and we think Show that the outcome is, yes, we may, we may give the same rates to everybody and we think that that's equal, but is that fair given? We've determined, you know, the organization that that isn't. And so we have programs to help people with that situation.
I would just, what kind of strikes me about the different definitions is, of course, the, that there's, it's outcome-centric as opposed to where you start. But I do think we have to be careful about whether we're facilitating an outcome or whether, like some of these are saying that it ensures it. And I'm not sure as an organization that we can ensure an outcome for somebody where we're playing only a partial role in it. And so I think we can do things to facilitate it and to, that our practices enable it. Don't restrict it. But some of these where they're ensuring that community members can thrive, I almost think goes beyond an organizational perspective of it. I think we're going to, that's going to be maybe the Goldilocks piece to, to the equity definition. And honestly, this is the one I personally struggled with getting a grip around for a long time. But definitely opportunity for people to achieve a certain outcome. And what, how we do and we facilitate, that's important. But there's also a line that I think we have to be careful of when we're talking about ensuring things as opposed to enabling.
Last one, inclusion. Anything stand out to you?
I think that one's really hard to measure. How do you, how do you know if people are, feel like they've been truly included and involved in the process? So doing, asking and, and how do you show in the work they're doing? The, oh, yeah, these ideas came from this and it got implemented here. Like this one is really challenging, I think, a metrics perspective to grasp.
Especially because if we do something that people don't like, then I would imagine they feel like they weren't included. So like John was saying, people will show up and testify against, testify for something. And if we take a vote opposite, it can be really easy to go back and include. So how will we address that?
I think it's hard to measure the absence of something and to kind of your points. I also know when it comes to the community piece, people don't usually show up and talk to us when they agree with us. And, and so some people are very, they, they show up, we hear them, they're very vocal. There's also a whole nother piece of our community that we need to be inclusive of, which maybe doesn't show up for various reasons, too. And so this one just, and it reminds me of the guy who used to show up and say, "Look, there's a videotape of no birds" or something because the 5G tower drove, "See, no, there's no birds in the video." It's like, well, you know, so I think this is going to be one that's, we're going to have to really be intentional in how we look at how this is applied and how we're determining its success because of what Mindy and John mentioned.
For me, this one, too, is somewhat about the intention. I mean, if I'm coming into a space and I have already made up my mind and nothing anybody says is going to change that, then that, then, then it's not inclusive. But if we have these open forums and we have people that come and present ideas and we're listening to what they have to say and we're open to the idea that maybe it's going to persuade us, then that to me is a, is different. But again, that's something that we all measure internally. I mean, where each person comes to that discussion or that meeting is all internal. I may come and think, I mean, Lieberg, I had no idea where it was going to be. You know, and as we went through the process, it changed and it went here and then it went there. And then we listened to new ideas. I mean, for me, that was, that was a really good process. Even if, even if at the end of that, you know, and we're always going to disagree with somebody. That's the nature of this work. But if we come at it, we do try to think about what ways we impact people's lives. And are there ways that, you know, this mattered a lot to this group of people? Could we help the negative impact of whatever we're doing? You know, remove some of that burden by changing it a little bit? As long as we're looking at that, having an open mind, for me, that, that is a process of inclusivity. But again, it's just very, maybe it's hard to measure. So that one will be.
Last thoughts, okay. I think part of this is understanding who's in the room and understanding where the absence voices might be. So you were talking about, I don't think it's having to agree with everyone. But it's making sure that. Yeah, I just think that on the equity, I'll just say one last thing. I think a big theme there is that we're starting in different ways. So I agree that the consultants can help us figure out how to measure this inclusion, right? I think there are strategies and I think that we need to learn more about how we, how we identify those. So thank you so much. This has been a wonderful session. We have this future home of eWeb's DEI policy here. Are there any last thoughts that you would like to leave us with before we come back to you at the next session?
I'm just looking at, you mentioned August. I will be gone the last week.
That is a great segue because I think there were a couple of sessions that were coming up that we wanted to potentially, like talk about those real quick and look at our calendars and the dates. Nothing else but we're moving to that topic.
I just want to say thank you. And I feel like the reason that this is, it's difficult because it's a sensitive topic, but also because ability, it's sometimes hard to see like how, how it all relates, right? When we're talking about electricity and water and then suddenly we have all this DEI stuff that we have to put on top of it. It's not like, it doesn't feel like a natural fit necessarily, but it's important that we need to do it. So I really appreciate all the work that you are giving out.
Thank you so much for all of your comments and your willingness to engage, so.
Can I just say one quick thing? I'll be very quick. You may sometimes wonder why Kelly, who is our climate policy analyst and advisor, is involved in some of these other things. And it's because she went through this journey of DEI with LTD. And so she has, and the same with Brian back here, not necessarily in charge of rate design, but he will be in charge of rate design for a while because that's what he did at his previous employer. So we're leveraging the diversity of talent that people have to help with this. So in case you wonder why you see different people, it might not, it might not be their direct role. It's in this case because she has background in it.
Well, and I'll just add to, climate change really has a climate justice component to it. And how the impacts of climate change are felt among different populations is very different. And I take that very seriously and that's a big part of my role. And I'm trying to bring that lens of a triple bottom line and the social components of some of these environmental issues on our community. So there is connection to that work as well.
Thank you all. I think we definitely got a lot of information here that we can work with. Appreciate it.
I was just picking the dates for the, I can adjourn it and then we can move on to that.
Okay, well, we will adjourn the work session.